And Mr. Mayor, you are on.
All right, welcome to the Briar City Council meeting of January 11, 2022. We'll go to the roll call, Councilmember Cranky.
Here.
Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Nick. Councilmember Roseman. Councilmember Marley.
Here.
And Councilmember Moran.
Here.
All right, welcome everyone. Before we proceed to public requests and oral communications, I'm going to do what we did last week. I gave a brief report. Because I know there's a lot of questions about the snow response. And then Steve Smith, our Public Works Supervisor is going to be on to add his comments as well. Because I think some of the questions that we might, and comments we might get tonight will be with respect to snow removal. And so I want to just give first of all, my comments and then Steve will give his and then we'll hear from from the community. First of all, I want to thank Steve, who is our Public Works Supervisor for working from home during the snow event while he was ill, even though he was out sick. He directed his staff during the snow event. Steve has many years of experience with respect to streets and snow removal, and we'll be hearing from him a little bit later on in the meeting. I also want to thank the residents for their emails and letting us know about specific concerns or questions that they had because we can't be everywhere. And so we got comments that helped us direct our staff. And so I want to thank the citizens for that. Unfortunately, we had staff out sick during the snow event, so that limited our ability to respond. But I also want to thank Tim and Marcus, who worked extra hours during the snow event to help cover as best as we could. So our snow plows have rubber edges to prevent and preserve street markers and help safety wise, and Steve will address that, why we have rubber edges to our street plows. That also makes it more difficult during times when we have compact snow and ice, which is what we had. Another challenge is that the snow and the cold come and go. The temperatures vary at near the freezing point, which also makes it really difficult to deal with because sometimes when it's colder, it's easier and better. But when it gets near thawing, then we get water and it makes it challenging. We also want to recognize that we have lower street counts. So we have street count counting devices that tell us what our street counts are, and we compare that to some of our neighboring cities. We definitely have less street counts than our neighboring cities, which also is a deterrent to removing some of the compact snow and ice because the street traffic does help remove that. The use of heavy salts and de-icers are environmentally and have equipment concerns. So we typically do not apply this very often. We do sometimes use salts. But typically, we dispense sand. Salts and de-icers have significant concerns. And I do want to announce that I'm planning in the near future, probably in the next month or so, to hold a city council workshop. For which the entire workshop event will be an opportunity for Steve to address snow and ice removal. He's very knowledgeable with respect to the costs and the upsides and downsides of using different snow removal and ice removal equipment. So we are going to dedicate an entire city council workshop to that. So that he can educate the council to see if we are appropriately providing the necessary financial and equipment support for that. So at this time, I want to welcome Steve, our Superintendent Public Works, and let him address us. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Dale. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what we talked about last week, especially for the folks that weren't here last week. Like Dale says, it was a real challenging event when we got those cold temperatures that ice formed and just bonded to the road. Basically, the tools we have in our toolbox currently to deal with snow and ice is the snow plows with the rubber bits. And like he explained, that's due to raised pavement markings, castings in the road and those types items. So it's the standard in Western Washington, the rubber plow blades, but they just won't cut through that ice and get down to the bare pavement. The other tool we have in our toolbox is sand, provide traction. The issue with sand is it does get blown to the sides of the road. You probably see that now as our street sweepers out working to pick it up. So you have to keep reapplying to provide that traction. Both ones blown to the side of the road becomes ineffective. So like Dale said, we're going to be having a workshop and I've started preparing for that. There are other tools available such as liquid de-icers and granule salt products, granule de-icers. Couple different methods as far as pre-treating roads or actually going out de-icing during an event rather than anti-icing before. So those all come with a cost. And I think the biggest concern I have are aging fleet. When you start enter, they're fairly corrosive and tend to do a toll on the equipment. So started the, one of the preliminary issues with the de-icer is if you buy it in small quantities, it's really expensive. And if you were to buy it off state contract, you need to get a minimum amount of 4,500 gallons. And you're paying a premium even at that price without getting a full 5,500 gallon tanker worth. So we'll be diving into those more and looking at different levels of service and let the council decide if they want to increase that level of service or if it's satisfactory what we're doing. This last event, we did have some illness. So we had reduced staff. But like Dale said, that reduced staff, Tim and Marcus, they did an outstanding job. And I think basically all the requests that I received, we were able to accommodate. We weren't able to get it to bare pavement like a lot of residents would have wanted, but we were able to do what we could with the tools we had in our toolbox. So also want to remind folks that we have a frequently asked questions section on our webpage. And there's some questions dedicated to snow and ice. And if you have any additional questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. But those are some of the most common asked questions there. So basically boils down to we're doing the best we can with what we have, but there are other options available.
All right, thank you, Steve. For that input, it's helpful. And yeah, the frequently asked questions on our website has a new portion with just respect with respect to snow and ice removal. So I encourage citizens to go there. And there's some good questions and answers there. So at this time, we're at the public request and oral communication portion of our meeting. So that means this is the time for citizens to address myself with the council. I see we have a number of attendees. And so if you would like to address myself with the council with respect to snow and ice removal or anything else that's on your mind, with respect to the city, this is the time to raise your hand and then Paula will let you into the meeting. All right. Any raised hands, Paula? Okay, Paula, you're on mute, but that's fine.
Sorry, that was so that I was having to yell at the dog and the cat. Sorry.
Okay.
No, nobody has their hand raised.
All right, one more time. This is the public request and oral communication portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to address myself or the council with respect to snow and ice removal or anything else that's on their mind, please raise your hand and Paula will let you into the meeting. All right.
Okay, I got a couple now.
All right.
Okay, we're bringing Chan into the meeting first.
Hello, how's everyone doing? This is Chan.
Yeah, name and address, please.
Sure, Hasham Othman, 3601 228th Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. My question's regarding, does the city of Briar have a vaccination requirement of employees?
As far as a mandate, we do not.
Okay. In regards to the snowplow staffing, how did the staffing of this most recent event compare to, say, February of 2021 or February 2019, this quote unquote, snowmageddon? Curious, being on 228th, I normally see the plow going up and down the street at any time, but this past event, I only saw it once. And I wasn't sure if I just happened to be missing it or if it was actually a considerable reduction in staff and vehicles.
Steve, I'll let you take on that one.
Yeah, so the other events, we were staffed with three maintenance workers and myself. I typically work the events too. When we have all of our plow trucks up and running, we do have a total of three trucks equipped with plows and sanders. So it is common for one of those to be down at a given time, but we always should have at least two trucks on the road during an event. So in those past events, you may have seen the truck more frequently. We were down to two trucks this time. So we never did get that third truck on the road. I do know we were on 228th, basically on a daily basis from the communication I had with the crew. And also speaking with Mount Lake Terrace, they were also putting de-icer coming down the hill as well. So they were hitting it and kind of the communication I had today is they will continue to in the future. That doesn't be a problem for them. It's a good turnaround spot and they can carry that de-icer through the Briar dip.
Thank you.
Steve, they also, Terrace, I saw them. I saw our guys sometimes back to back, depending on what operation they were running. And then Terrace on 214th, which is another one of our through roads to Terrace, they came all the way down to Poplar basically and turned around and came back. So I did appreciate Terrace kind of doing their extra little bit to help out there in a couple of those roads, so.
We have Lauren being let into the meeting.
All right, Lauren, welcome. Welcome to the meeting. Your name and address, please.
Lauren Martin, 2752 216th Street. Briar, Washington.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we live basically on the opposite side of Briarwood, which we kind of live in this really tiny cul-de-sac area. And we have that main drag that goes up to Briar Road, which seems to be a pretty used frequently, I guess, to get to 405 and kind of middle ground, if you will. But that seems to be sort of a sticking point for us. That hill in and of itself remains very icy. We were sort of reverted through Briarwood. Thankfully, we were kind of able to go downhill and in through Briarwood and up by the 711. But we didn't actually see any plows going up and down that street, which is, you know, on an average, a really busy thorough to 405. So it's a commonly used street. But yet I didn't see any plows going through there. I saw plows coming up down from 405 and taking a right into Briarwood. Obviously, that was not paved either. So we, we kind of live in this area where there's only really two ways to get to I-5, if that's where you need to go from 405 or in this area. So I was just kind of wondering what streets take priority if we're down to two trucks out of three?
All right, Steve, can you talk about the priority level, the streets that are, I know we have a map that shows the different priority levels, right?
Post to the website, we do have a priority map and that tries to identify all of our major and any of the hills that have been problematic. So those are, those would take priority before we got to any of the other streets. As far as 216th, I know we were traveling 216th to get to the Briarwood neighborhood. I know I dispatched several trucks for several requests in the Briarwood neighborhood. When you get further down on Vine Road near Locust Creek Park, that hill and area there, that was a real problem. So we tried to keep that open and found that in the evening, we would get calls from the police department that there was collisions occurring or it was just too slick. So we did close that street down. So at that point, we tried to get it open later in the event, but it just proved that that sand would once blow off with the traffic and be issue again, and the police would request to have it closed. So we chose to leave it closed the majority of the events. I know that's pretty standard with a lot of jurisdictions. Hills like that that are tricky, that are real problematic. It's kind of standard to have road closure signs staged at those areas. Areas closed during an event. So I don't think we're alone in that. I know a lot of other jurisdictions are doing that as well with some of their problematic streets.
All right, thank you for that question, Lauren. I just, it's a good reminder. I want to thank, like I did last week, our police officers who helped out Frankie and Kelly and Rob, who filled in as they got requests. And they participated in help throwing out sand. And so we appreciate that. The officers helping to keep people safe. So I want to think, I want to publicly thank the officers. All right.
Okay, we got another one. Bill B is being brought into the meeting.
All right, Bill, thank you. What name and address, please?
Sure. Full name is William Bartig at 3417 227th Street Southwest. So I have actually two unrelated questions. I'll start with one if there's time, then you can give me the floor again for the second. But first one is the snow melt and heavy rains thereafter helped form the newly christened Lake Briar in the property next to ours due to some culvert drainage issues. So in trying to map all this out, what we're trying to, what we've heard is that the city has done a lot of work recently to map its stormwater drainage. So it seems like all the public stormwater drainage is pretty well understood at this point. But it sounds like none of the private stormwater drainage that intersects with the public drainage and public, you know, waterways has been mapped along with that. Why is that? Because they do work together to form the city's stormwater drainage.
Steve, you want to address that? Or can you, or is that more of an Eric question?
Well, I can, I can take a stab at it. So we're obviously trying to do better mapping as, as the years go on, as we learn more about our system. So a lot of that's done through ASBILTS. So as these newer plats come onboard, we're obviously mapping the newer systems. I just don't think that technology, GIS and then the GPS technology was utilized or was available with some of our older neighborhoods and some of our older plats. A lot of the systems are mapped, but there's still some out there that is unknown. So right now, I know Pace Engineers is doing a large effort on hydrology reports. So we went out and actually mentioned all the city-owned facilities. And I think a lot of those missing links will be coming in through these hydrology reports and finding where flows go and where the missing links are. But that's.
Yeah, so I did direct Pace, who is our city engineer, to update our drawings and that hydrology report, I think is just about complete. And so the updates of the, of the, of the different systems is getting onto our GIS system. So hopefully that's happening. If you have a specific one bill that you want to make sure is a concern, please email myself or Steve or Eric, and we can make sure that gets into the system. And you had a second question?
Sure. Yeah. So my second question was in the snowy event. It seemed like the, that Briar Road, once you crossed northbound, once you northbound, you crossed a large outside of Briar that the road's clear pretty quickly. Was that due to just the short staffing in Briar to keep Briar Road plowed? Or is it because of heavier traffic north of Briar? Or is there any idea of why that was so vastly different?
Like me to speak?
Yeah, please.
So I would say probably the, the two biggest factors on the surrounding jurisdiction's streets being down to bare pavement, I think the big factor is the use of de-icers in combination with a lot heavier traffic counts. So I spoke to one local jurisdiction today and, and they were telling me they went through 6,000 gallons of liquid de-icer. So yeah, when you're putting down heavy liquid de-icer like that, along with doing pre-treatments to keep it from bonding, helps break that up to where those rubber plow bits achieve that commitment and get onto it. But we're trying to battle it without that tool in your toolbox. It's about impossible.
All right, thank you, Bill, for those questions. If you need further clarification, please feel free to contact myself or Steve. Who else do we have? Paula?
We have Kevin Davis coming in.
All right, Mr. Davis, name and address, please.
Kevin Davis, 22375 33rd Place West.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, just kind of want to give a kudo to Steve and his team for doing the best they can with what they had. You know, I think that this, this event was kind of bizarre with the low temperatures and the amount of snow. So good job to them. I would just say, suggest that, you know, maybe instead of buying a ton of new equipment, maybe contracting with, you know, Mount Lake Terrace or Lynnwood to, you know, de-ice those, the main roads going through Briar Road, the dip. Stuff like that, that might be a money saver for the city. Cool resources there. You know, another kudos to Sham for cleaning the drain there at the bottom of the dip. I drove by and saw a local resident there cleaning the drains. So kind of averted a serious situation there in that guy's house at the bottom getting plastered by the, by the slush and everything. One other thing I had in the Dundee neighborhood, you know, I've requested this before, local access only signage. Because the, it turns into a main thoroughfare in the morning and afternoon with parents cutting through and dropping kids off in that cul-de-sac. I don't know if the city's ever reached out to Briar to, I mean, the Edmund School District about notifying parents, but I think a little more action is probably necessary. We don't have sidewalks in the neighborhood. And, you know, people cut through that four-way stop. At one time, we had pretty good police presence there and they ticket people every now and then they whip along that stop sign. But it's kind of a death trap. And I'm not sure how effective those local access only signage is, signage is or laws are. But I think it'd just be another reminder to keep people out. But that's it. And then comprehensive plan, I'd kind of like to get a, understand the position of the city on when we adopt more of the comprehensive plan requirements. I saw the older one posted, I think it's 2018, about ADUs. And I know we're pushing a lot for, you know, more, more housing and stuff like that in Briar, but the, the single smaller lots are excluded from that ADU allowance. And kind of like to get a feel, I think some other residents are interested in that. Where the city's going with that, I think some information would be good. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate that. And yeah, I want to, yes, echo your thanks for Steve and definitely keep the items that you brought up in mind. So thank you, that. All right. So it looks like Lauren is back.
Yes, Lauren has raised her hand again.
Last question, I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of what the last individual said, because again, we live on 216th. So we live in, right, coming off of Briar Road. Obviously, speed is an issue. We live right across the street from the new development. We've had neighbors have cars crash into their fencing. So obviously Briar doesn't have any, you know, red lights or anything like that. But would the city ever be open to, or is it feasible to have any sort of speed bump or deterrent between, you know, lower Briarwood up to the main drag here to sort of slow that congestion? And I don't know if it would be a safety issue because I do see it as a safety issue if people were coming too quickly or something like that. But we have a lot of children around the area. We have a lot of people that walk dogs. Me, myself, I cross the street quite frequently to go down to the smaller Briar Park. So would that be something that we could? And obviously I see, you know, Briar PD's out there pulling people over, but it doesn't really seem to deter the people that use that as a go-to between 405, I-5, Lynnwood, et cetera.
Thank you for that. So that, that comment, that question has been brought to our attention and we have looked at it before and we're looking at it again. We're actually doing some street counts. The two lines that you see crossing the intersections are to get some street counts to help our engineer, our city engineer, give us advice with respect to that. So that's something that we definitely keep looking at. So I appreciate those comments and we will take those into advisement. Do we have anybody else, Paula?
Nobody with their hand up, no.
All right. So I want to thank those people that have commented and we will definitely keep those comments and questions in mind. And if you have further ones, please let us know. It's like Don's got his hand raised.
Oh, he, he doesn't need to raise his hand. He gets to talk and admit it under council comments and stuff.
Okay. I didn't want to get my knuckles wrapped. Okay, good, good to know that I could speak freely. Thank you, Paula.
Hang on a second. We had a last minute citizen raise their hand for public requests.
Okay.
We have Kathy Wood coming into the meeting.
All right, welcome Kathy. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wood. I live in an apartment on the backside of Briar Pizza, right on the backside of Briar Pizza at 23631 Briar Road. I'm late coming into the meeting. I apologize for that. So I'm not quite sure where we were at. I'm hoping that there was some address made towards the road clearing at Briar, in Briar. Is that correct?
Yeah, we had, we had comments from myself and then Steve Smith, our superintendent, and we had some questions and comments with respect to snow and ice removal. So rather than repeat all that, Kathy, I'd welcome you to call me at City Hall. And I can help answer any specific questions with respect that you might have. But you have a brief question or a comment?
No, no, I just, no, I'll wait and talk to you personally. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You can, you can call me at City Hall if I'm not there, leave a message or you can email me. Thank you. All right. Anybody else, Paula? Nope. Okay, we're going to move on to reports of committees and city officials. And what I'd like to do is start off myself. Obviously, I've been meeting with the local mayors and the snow and ice removal was a topic that we had. So we are not alone. Snow and ice removal was a big, a topic for all the mayors and along with COVID, COVID response, something that all of us are struggling with. And we will have a meeting, a workshop upcoming with respect to allocation of resources. So I want to, I want to thank Steve and welcome him to drop off if he'd like with, with respect to this. If I may, before Steve. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I want to build on the comments that Sham and Warren and, and Bill brought forth. The general manager of my household, to whom I'm married, has echoed many of the same questions about snow. And I'm wondering, maybe Steve, when we have this workshop for the snow issues, is there a way of benchmarking how well our roads are managed in these kinds of snowmageddon events compared to the neighboring Mount Lake Terrace and Lynnwood community? And the reason I say that is just from a subjective and very opinionated point of view. My wife seems to feel that Mount Lake Terrace and Lynnwood is the place where she could walk barefoot in the snow or at least on the streets because there's no snow and ice compared here to Briar. So I'm just wondering, are there lessons we can learn from our neighbors in this area? Or in fact, is that just unfounded opinion on the basis of my faithful wife?
Well, my personal opinion on that is anything's achievable if you throw enough money at it, resource at it. So some of the larger jurisdictions that have a little more funding and have more of those tools in the toolbox who do the 24-hour round-the-clock operations, yeah, their pavements are going to be in a lot better condition when it comes to snow and ice and achieving. Yeah, their pavements are going to be in a lot better uh condition when it comes to snow and ice and achieving that that bare pavement. So I think it just all comes down to those tools in the toolbox, uh, the cost associated with it. Uh, your staffing level and uh the quality of your fleet and your equipment for uh applying those materials.
It, Donna, something I was gonna, since you brought it up, so I was gonna send a note to the mayor and Steve just for some things to they bring to that workshop. So one of the things to look at is uh what is spent per capita. So and number of trucks per capita. Now, when you get to places that have apartments and they have much more vertical. Obviously, the uh and the mileage, how many roads and miles of it are. So if you look at the factors of how many miles of road, Briar's about twenty-two miles of road. You know, what, how many people do you have? We're sixteen hundred, but if somebody else might have, but they got fewer road mileage per people. How many trucks do they have? And then how much do they spend for their budget? I think those are numbers that would be really useful to see how we compare on that front. Also, I will just note, for people that may not have been in Briars, I I for the time I've been on council. Uh, we started with one truck, which was a little bit sketch truck. And now that we have three, we've gotten it to three, so the prior mayor had been working. So there have been some activities also too from where we uh used to be. So it doesn't always feel like it when you're in the moment. And and then we kind of had the, you know. Uh, the perfect storm, so to speak, uh, with the illness now at the same time, but uh I've seen some of the uh overtime hours that the guys spent and. Just for people, they they spent a a lot of hours, so. Uh, anyway, so those are a couple of things that I was going to send a note on, Dawn, just to see if we could get some things to help get some of that comparison. Certainly. You know, if you know what the traffic is on everybody roads, because I was out and about, and I I was seeing a lot of the same comments. But I was driving back roads of Mount Lake Terrace on Sunday, Monday, and those roads were not any better. And I know that. I don't even think out of Snohomish County, just out of the north end where I live, I'm coming out of Briar on Poplar Road. I don't think the county got to it till Monday. They did their first plowing of uh Poplar, at least based on what I was seeing. But it could have been Sunday night, but anyway, so I was thinking we could get some of those numbers to help us out, understand that a little bit more.
Hey, real quick while we have you, Steve, because my curiosity is just, it's killing me. Do you think, in your professional opinion, is it more the de-icer or the rock salt that has done the bulk of the damage on in in Terrace as an example on forty-fourth and forty-eighth? I mean, those potholes are terrible. So I was kind of frustrated with the snow, but now hindsight's twenty-twenty. You look at those roads, they are hammered. So do you think it's more the salt of the de-icer that's doing the bulk of that damage?
Well, it depends on who you talk to. You talk to the de-icer salesman, you can drink the stuff.
But the salt deteriorates the asphalt, if I'm not mistaken, right?
That's what I've found. Um, it sure seems like it to me. I've been around those loading areas for salt and de-icers. And it seems like it just takes all the fine aggregate out of those a- asphalt mixes. You're left with a with a bony mix. I think what you're describing, though, we can't blame on the iceers. I think what that is, is just the water um getting down in the cracks. Under those layers of asphalt. Creating what you call a delam. So it's delaminating asphalt when it freezes and and creating that top two-inch lift to to pop. And I'm seeing it all over. I know we have uh two locations. I seen on Vine Road. I want to get out there with some flaggers, but. Um, I know it was mentioned last week, pretty proud of our streets. They are in pretty good shape and we'd like to keep them that way. Um, looking at drowning jurisdictions, definitely stand some problems with those delams from the freeze.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I've always appreciated, frankly, for my cars that we don't use salt. Yeah, I never want to buy a car out coming out of the East Coast, so.
All right. Thank you again, Steve, for your contribution. And uh we'll move on to reports of committees and city officials. And I just want to report. Um, again, to let people know that at our last city council meeting. The city council approved a personal services contract for Nick Omquist for a Briar police chief. We hired Proffman to help us find a chief and they gave us four candidates. Nick was chosen. He went through a rigorous review with respect to background check. By a professional investigator, physical exam, lie detector, polygraph, psych tests and other investigations. Nick passed with flying colors. Um, his background report was twenty-seven pages. It had included supervisors, superiors, people that Nick had trained, family members. Staff that worked for him and officers that also he trained. All the input was excellent. I'm happy to report that his current boss is very pleased with him and is mentoring him for a chief's position. His leadership style, decision-making process, communication skills, ethics, integrity, budget experience. And recruitment skills are all outstanding. Um, he was likely to be the next police chief um in Snoqualmie where he's working now. He has a bachelor of arts in leadership and management. And he has extensive training and understands the Washington State regulations. He's also has ability to um recruit. And um find new officers. So we're excited about having him join. Councilmember Crinkie and I, um, who've been working on this, um, we're excited and the whole staff. He's already um provided some support to us, even though he's not employed. He starts next week. So I just wanted to reiterate that, let everybody know that that's an upcoming. All right, any other reports from committees or city officials?
Um, community transit last week, board meeting. They also had similar problems with the snow. Pardon me, and um. Very, very few accidents. They were they were fortunate and um. They're arguing they've got a lot of folks out with COVID too and had trouble keeping uh buses on the road between the snow and the shortage of operators. But they made it through with very little uh collateral damage.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any other any other reports?
Mr. Mayor, I came in on Monday, the tenth, and reviewed the claim checks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Nick. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Moving on to hearings. We do have a public hearing tonight for consideration of a home occupation. Uh, staff member. Carrie Snowden is here with us. Welcome. I'll let you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just, I'd like to just disclose that I've been a client of B's over the years, so. In case there's any concerns, it should pop up. Well, I better just.
Oh, recusal. Come on. So thank you, Councilmember Crinkie, for letting us know. Um, if anybody has. A problem with Councilmember Crinkie participating in this hearing, please uh let me know. All right, Carrie, welcome.
Thank you, Dale. Um, this is going to be pretty quick, I think. Um, the application for the home occupation business licenses for B Stockwell, of course, um CPA, she's going to have a home office. Um, in her home at three, one, two, one, two, thirty-six, three, southwest. Um, she is anticipating one to two clients per day. Um, she's going to be performing tax preparation and other related taxes or other related tasks. Um, related to the accounting world. Um, she is going to be operating between ten AM and four PM, Monday through Friday. Um, she has parking spaces available on her property, so it doesn't look like um any street parking is going to be an issue. Um, and those two spots are going to be in front of the garage. Um, she, of course, resides at her home. And she'll be the only employee, so pretty quick.
All right, thank you, Carrie. So I'm going to open the public hearing at seven thirty-eight. With respect to consideration for this home occupation. Uh, let's see.
Paula, you're on mute if you're trying to. Of course, yeah, of course I am. You need to, I'm letting B in. You need to give her an opportunity to talk real quick before you start the.
Welcome, 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 B. If you have any comments for the city council, obviously. We have a written report, but this is a good time for you to address the council.
Um, I don't have any questions, really. I'm on the the back end of my career, actually, and have decided. That I don't want the hours or the administrative headaches of an office anymore, so I. Have some long-time clients I've had over thirty years that. Did not want to stay with the firm that was there um that I'll be handling. Some of them visit me whether I would be doing their taxes or not. Uh, but I want to keep it sort of low-key and I'm not planning to do it in any hours. It would be. An issue for any of the neighbors.
Right. Thank you. Okay, anybody else in this public hearing have a comment either for or against this consideration for this home occupation? Please raise your hand. All right, one more time. This is the public hearing for consideration of the home occupation. For B Stockwell, anyone have a comment or question either for or against this occupation? All right, Paula, do you see any?
No.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing at. Seven forty. So I would entertain a motion.
Well, not to be biased right now, but I'll move to uh approve the home occupation uh application. Six, zero, four, two, two, two. I guess three, twos, five, nine, two, look here, that three, one, two, with two, three, six feet southwest uh by for uh B Stockwell, for B Stockwell CPA.
All right, so we have a motion by Crinky and I think a second by Roseman. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing that, all those who favor the motions, you know, by saying aye. I oppose, say nay, and the motion passes. All right, congratulations, B. And best of luck with your business in Briar. All right, moving on to new business. First of all, we have the appointment of Mill Creek Councilmember Stephanie. By Big Noel to the Snohomish County Health Board District. So this is a position. That is shared between, I believe it's Bothell, Mill Creek and Briar on a rotating basis. Is that right, Paula?
Correct.
And previously, uh, former Councilmember Joplin participated in this. And in this time, uh, the Mill Creek City Council. Has made a recommendation and we are um asked to. I guess vote to agree to that appointment.
Yes, it rotates every two years. So Councilmember Joplin had it for the last two years. Now it'll be Mill Creek for the next two, then Bothell's turn, and then it'll come back to us. And so this is the representative that Mill Creek has chosen for their position.
All right, so I entertain a motion.
They ask a question. Uh, again, this is just my, I'm trying to understand. So this applicant or this candidate has been. Uh, nominated and we're being asked to approve it, but. Uh, when when this position is is brought on board and and this candidate is is nominated, are there? What are the credentials for someone to do this kind of a position? It looks like it's a pretty heavy public health position to me with. Understanding of prevention, disease, epidemiology. I I just Googled the individual and it looks like she's a property manager or at least real estate management individual. So I'm I'm wondering what what expertise an individual has to have to serve in this capacity.
You have to be on one of the councils.
Yeah.
It's one, it's one of the electives. That's all it can be. It can't be anyone else.
As much expertise as I have in parks.
Right. And and that's the thing is, you know, there in previous years, they also have asked at different points and times for the different cities. Um, to that their person was still had gotten re-elected or whatever and was still interested in serving. And the health board has even come to us and said, hey, Mr. So-and-so is doing a great job. Would y'all consider? Giving up your turn this year and, you know, letting them continue to serve. And we we've actually done that in the past. You know, it's like Mr. Joplin, he was the last two years, but then he had been, you know, previously. We appointed at one.
Forgo their position one year?
Yeah.
Or one cycle?
Yeah. And so it is a learning curve for all of them, but um they're not. I don't, I don't think they're making any of your major health decisions. They're just there as a representative from the cities. To gather information to, you know, chime in.
Okay.
There, you know, of course, like uh Dr. Spitters from Snohomish County, he's there. You know, you have, you have all those people who have that kind of uh education that are involved and and running those meetings and. Everything, so.
And as you'll see, Councilwoman Moran, so some of these appointments represent experts with respect to. If it's emergencies, we have chiefs and we have fire. Fire chiefs and police chiefs, but they also require electives. And one of the reasons they require electives, even though they might have have the expertise in a specific area. Is because the electives are accountable to the citizens with respect to funding. And so the one of the beauties and the requirements of having electives is that electives. Can ask good questions and they can also um. Represent their citizens with respect to the funding, because sometimes the ex- the experts can. Um, dominate the conversations and the electives bring it back to. Can we afford this? Is this a good allocation of resources? And so even though you might not be an expert in the field, that's the purpose of having electives. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Not sure how it would be stated, but I would move in favor of the appointment of Mill Creek. Councilmember Stephanie Big Noel to the Snohomish Health District Board. Yes, I mean, I didn't massacre her name.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Nick. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing that, all of the motions, you can all be saying aye.
Aye, aye.
You oppose, say nay. All right, the motion passes. Um, at this time, we're going to move on to the annual request to consider the comprehensive plan amendments. So this is a notica- notification of our annual comprehensive plan update. And the city of Briar is now accepting requests to consider suggestions to the amendments of the C count, city of Briar. This comprehensive plan. This is an annual opportunity for the public to pose. Amendments to the plan by state law amendments or revisions to the plan generally made. Must be made once per year. The Briar Comprehensive Plan is an official public policy document to guide the city's growth and the development for upcoming years. Adopted by the city council, the plan contains text. Statistics and maps that are on the city's website. So if you have suggestions for our comprehensive plan. Uh, please let me know or Jennifer, Jennifer, who's our city planner with respect to your updates.
They're they're due by March thirty-first before end of business day.
Okay, so that's just a reminder, let myself or Jennifer know about your comments with respect to our. Uh, comprehensive plan.
Will there be an announcement on the Briar webpage uh letting people know about this or anything in the Briar newsletter?
I think there is on the website.
It it goes as a public notice on the website. No, our newsletter does not come out at the time of year where this goes in.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, moving forward, item C nomination and selection of mayor pro temp. For twenty twenty-two. So this is something that we do every year. Mayor pro temp is the person that's selected by the city council. That would take over in the event that the mayor could not do his duties or the mayor was gone. So I would open the floor to nominations.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I want to nominate the honorable Mike Gallagher.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilmember Gallagher.
Accept and thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Other nominations?
Second on Gallagher.
Oh, we're doing that.
These are nominations so far.
Yeah, good, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to uh first thank Councilmember Nick for his uh accepting the role in twenty twenty-one. And uh would offer Councilmember Crinky's uh nomination for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we have so far two nominations, Gallagher and Crinky.
I I uh I consulted the great Google on how one selects a mayor pro temp and and Google suggests at least uh from the commission that uh election commission. In a general election, when you look at count all the votes of all the candidates who ran in the most recent election, the individual who got the second highest number of votes. After the mayor should become the nominee for the uh the bear pro temp. Which would especially make John Lockhart the nominee by one vote over Martin.
Thank you. Thank you, Google.
Try that on DuckDuckGo, you might get a different answer.
All right, are there, are there any other nominations? So far, we have Gallagher and Crinkie. All right, hearing none. Let's see, I think we're gonna do this instead of um. Voice vote will do by raising of hands. Because I, I don't know how else to do this and be accurate.
I, I can do it and be accurate and you have to do it as a roll, roll call vote.
Oh, I do?
We do. But I can do it for you. That is allowed.
All right, thank you. I guess if there's any confusion, right, then we go to a hand vote. Is that how it goes? Or does someone have to?
No, it's, it's okay. I, I got, I got it handled. Hold on a second. Let me write down everybody's name.
No hanging chats, Paula. Come on.
I, I will make the observation that Mike seemed to be very appreciative of the nomination. Martin, I'm not so sure you. You uh, you telegraphed your, your uh, enthusiasm, so.
Well, like you, I mean, honestly, I think that this is a, a sense here. So I think um, on these positions, enthusiasm or not. I think that one does need to bear in mind in the roles and responsibilities of such. Um, there are situations, I had this uh, when our prior mayor got as mayor pro tem and the mayor was injured and out for a number of weeks. Uh, you know, you're dealing everything from uh, personal staff issues to other contract, things like that. Um, that were going on. And so I saw the gambit of all those pieces, so uh, just because I'm not. Uh, is certainly, I am certainly uh, willing to do the role uh, from that. So if there's any question about that, I am absolutely willing to do the role and.
Speech there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are you guys?
My enthusiasm was called into question.
Are you, are you guys ready for me to do this now? Okay, Councilmember Nick.
Mike Gallagher.
Okay. Councilmember Moran.
I, I, I saw Mike's eyes light up. I'm uh, I'm in favor of Mike.
Hey, Councilmember Gallagher.
I'm voting for me.
Councilmember Lockhart.
I'm gonna go with the lights light up is where the eyes light up, Michael.
Okay, Councilmember Marley.
Uh, Councilmember Crinkie.
And Councilmember Roseman.
Hard choice, guys. Which flavor of ice cream? Um, I think you guys will both like, oh, uh, I would say, um. I would back Gallagher.
Okay, and Mr. Crinkie.
Uh, I'd vote for myself. That's gonna take a difference.
Right, five, five to two, Mr. Gallagher is our new pro tem.
Aw, darn.
All right, thank you.
Well, we'll be in touch with you about what all your duties are very shortly.
Okay, and there's, and there's no extra pay.
Nope. Nope.
All right, moving on to miscellaneous business by call of council members. Anybody?
We have a meeting next week, right?
Uh, we will have a meeting next week, I think. Councilmember Crinkie, are we ready next week for an update on our?
Yeah, well, we'll take, bring the branding. I, there's more churn being added, so, but we'll talk about it and go.
So we have enough to make it another.
Yeah, absolutely. We needed, we need.
Okay, so we'll have a, we'll have a workshop next week with respect to branding.
Well, that's a bummer. I was really hoping we.
Sorry, Paula.
Dang it. Okay.
Unless they want to push it off for two weeks.
No.
Okay.
I can, I can always get my hopes up. It doesn't actually mean that anything will happen.
All right, moving on, Councilmember Nick, our name accounts.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion to approve of January twenty twenty-two claim checks. Number four, three, 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 eight to number four, three, three, six, three. In the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
I will second what seems to be a really small number for a change.
I know.
It won't be in two weeks, just for the record.
All right, we have a motion from Nick and a second of Gallagher. Any discussion to the motion?
Uh, maybe Dennis, I noticed that there was one check for twenty-four thousand to Axon. I'm assuming that's for the, it's called small equipment. That's for the new tasers for the police force?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone's equipped with that, with that equipment now, okay?
They don't have it yet, but they're ordered.
Yeah. And then there's, okay. There's some. There's some training to go on with that.
Okay.
Anyway, yes. All right, um, okay, we have a motion, a second, all who favor the motion, you go by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying nay, and the motion passes. All right, thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Good night, all.